Regular session of the Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, July 8th, 6:30 PM. Local call, please.
Mayor Kulianis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulias?
Air.
Get to the bottom of the eerie sound. I have a proclamation tonight. It's for the Park and Recreation Department. So Bob Robertson and Jamie Taylor, please come forward. Okay, thank you. If you look up at the screen, that was when I coached a youth soccer team. All those kids are now in their 50s. Some of them have grandchildren. That's actually me with all the hair. And that was directly across the street from City Hall, where the sewer plant is now. That's where we played everything. That's where, you know, it was mostly a little bit of grass, a lot of dirt, sand spurs. And, you know, we've come a long way since those days. We've got the beautiful sports facility out there with soccer fields, football fields. We've got baseball fields. We've got probably the, I can't imagine any city, 26,000 residents that has the parks we have. Anderson Park, Howard Park, Sunset Beach, Craig Park, I'm sure missing parks, Dorset Park. I mean, we've done, come so far from those days where we, you know, the kids played on dirt and sands spurs. So... In this city, and so that's why I'm going to read this proclamation, and it has a lot of meaning to me as well. Whereas proclaiming July as Parks and Recreation Month is an opportunity for our community and local leadership to officially acknowledge the importance of our parks and recreation and the benefits provided to the people we serve. And whereas since 1985, people across the United States have celebrated Parks and Recreation Month to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities and to recognize the workers and volunteers that maintain our community parks. And whereas parks and recreation programs enhance the quality of life for our residents by providing places... And a place for older citizens to maintain healthy hearts and minds and to easily access the great outdoors. And whereas during Park and Recreation Month observance, it is important to recognize the contributions of our dedicated employees and volunteers who provide and preserve the quality of our parks and the recreation opportunities offered to our residents and the many visitors that we serve. And whereas it is most appropriate to recognize the hard work and dedication of our park supervisor, James Burke and staff, our recreation superintendent, Jamie Taylor and staff, also our interim Public Works Director, Bob Robertson. I just threw that in, it's not on here, but I just threw it in. For the enormous value we receive every day from these departments. Now, therefore, I, John Kulianis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. So I have a one for you.
What's up, Mayor?
All right, well, I'm not even, I'm not part of the parks. All right, let's get this out of the way. Look like Steven Spielberg here.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you Commissioners for the proclamation. Bob Robertson, interim project, Public Works Director. Just a quick note to say thanks, and I'm going to give up the mic because they outnumber me like 10 to 1. So Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, thank you very much. First to point out the appreciation towards the Board, towards city leadership for the continued support of our efforts and what we do. The echo is because we party in recreation, so that comes with it. But on a more serious note, you know, we are very blessed in this city. We have an excellent parks maintenance crew. They take care of a lot of different things, get pulled in a lot of different directions each day, so really appreciate them. And then saving the best for last, we've got our recreation staff here. Over 100 years of tenure, you know, behind me here, dedication, heart, they are the heart, soul, and the muscle to our recreation department. Got Duffy Smith, Antoine Bass, Gail Gadsden, Gina Bass, Shire Fazell, Brooks Fountain, Ashley Harder, Nicole Fakehaly, sorry, excuse me, and Joanna Rinaldi. We've got some other part-timers that are running pickleball right now and also keep our programs and operations running. But again, I feel blessed to work for the city and just grateful to have everyone next to me and with us here tonight, so thank you.
So next, we're going to have public comments on, public comments are for special presentations, proclamations, consent agenda items, and all other items that are not items on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak, please come up.
Good evening, Tarpon Springs Board, Anita Protes, 901 Bayshore Drive. Mayor, I would like you or the city manager at one of the meetings to give us an update on projects coming into the city and businesses that are interested in coming to the city. There's so much going around in the community, we don't know what's really going on, and we would like to have a status report on Manatee Village, because we don't see a lot of commercial work going there. And the village, Manatee Village, is a business project of Tarpon, and it's greatly needed. So if you at one of the meetings can give us an update on all the projects coming into Tarpon, businesses that are interested, because if businesses are interested, maybe we can write letters to tell them the police come to Tarpon Springs. We are the open gate to Pinellas County, but we are poor in a lot of establishments that you have as you go down to Dutton Eden and Clearwater, and I know it's Highway 19, and that's why we've got to see what's happening. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Margot Lizer, 514 Ashland Avenue. Today, I stand before you to address a heart-wrenching tragedy that has struck Texas. We mourn the loss of 27 young girls between the ages of seven and 10 who perished in a devastating flood. This tragedy is not just a natural disaster, it's a stark reminder of the consequences of the decisions that are made by those in power. A few years ago, a good people at that town approached their commissioners with a simple request to install flood alarms along the river, because the residents knew that that river rose. But, you know, the commissioners, they said, "No, it's too expensive." So today, we must ask ourselves, what price do we have on human life? Were the lives of those 27 young girls worth 500,000, a million? To their grieving parents, no amount of money could ever equate to the value of those children's lives. So imagine the scene at the commission meeting, perhaps the commissioners rolled their eyes, limited the time for discussion, or even walked out during their pleas. The result, 27 young girls are dead. So does that sound familiar to all of you? So I'm here to remind you that the decisions made in those seats have power and profound impact. It's imperative to humble our egos and listen to the voices in this community. No single person has all the answers, it takes a village, working together to ensure the safety and vitality of this community. And to those who may be unsettled by the reading of scriptures, I urge you not to shoot the messenger, but look deep inside of you and ask you, ask yourselves, why does that bother you? That's where the true answers lie, inside of each and every one of you. So let us honor the memory of those that's been lost and work together to prevent such tragedies from ever happening in our community. Thank you.
Next, please.
Jane Harrington, 1021 Jamaica Way, Tarpon Springs. Sorry, my voice is gone. Good evening. I would like to first start out and thank code enforcement and the police for all the work they did to clean out the yard on Castle Works Lane. That eyesore has been around for several years and has affected our neighborhood. We can't thank you enough. I pray he's not allowed to do that again. Secondly, I'm disappointed that the Board voted to further limit time for public comments from the community. It seems to me that residents should be encouraged to be involved and to share their priorities and concerns. Remember, you represent us, the residents. Sorry, I'm sick and I hear myself coming through something. It does not seem proper to be annoyed by our concerns or our public speaking styles. Not everyone can be as concise as others. Many agenda items in my mind could be handled by department heads working directly with the city manager for approval. For example, discussing the payment of legal fees or buying truck parts, to me, seems like a waste of your meeting time, since there's no path to non-payment. The city manager should make those decisions based on budgets, standards of practice, guidelines, and city contracts. The Board would then publicly review and discuss items that are outside of that standard. That will save you time. In the last meeting, Peter made a great suggestion. Commissioners should have a limit on their time. Your questions and comments should be within four minutes, then two minutes for follow-up as the round robin goes by the mayor. You have the process and backup for each meeting agenda topic. That allows you to concisely prepare your questions and then be aware if someone else has already asked the same question during the meeting. We, all of us few that sit in this audience, are well aware when you each repeat each other. Thanking everyone for presentations from the city, which are actually their jobs, although culturally expected, often cost you a lot of time in these meetings. Please get to the heart of the factors that influence the decisions that matter to the city. Since public comment periods are not always, are not a two-way dialogue, since you can never answer or respond to a comment, could you consider having town hall-style meetings? Residents can receive answers and insights on your prior public comments not addressed, plus residents could ask questions on a range of topics important to them. More dialogue would increase comments and understanding by everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let me explain something to you and to the rest of the audience. If, what we're going to start doing from now on, if people want to take time sauntering up to the podium and wasting time because they don't want to line up, we will start the three minutes the time they get up. So from now on, city clerk, you start the clock when you see that person stand up. Thank you. Go ahead now.
You know, you've spent more time from all that than it took me to get up here. Okay. So Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue, I may have to do a little speed reading here, but my passage for today is from Matthew 13, beginning at 12. It relates to Isaiah, and if you want to look to Isaiah up at 6, starting at passage 9, but this is when the disciples were questioning Jesus as to why he speaks in parables. And he says, "This is why I speak to them in parables. Though seeing, they do not see; though hearing, they do not hear or understand. In them is fulfilled the prophecy of Isaiah. You will be ever hearing, but never understanding; you will be ever seeing, but never perceiving. For this people's heart has become calloused; they hardly hear with their ears, and they have closed their eyes. Otherwise, they might see with their eyes, hear with their ears, and understand with their hearts. In turn, I would heal them." So, going back to last meeting with the public comments, looks like the paper's out, I just want to quickly comment on some of the comments that were made. This was Mayor Kulianis, some people are abusive about the continuous comments on every single item. Commissioner Mike Eisner, when you have someone who speaks on every comment that comes about, you kind of roll your eyes. He said, "I don't need a sixth commissioner, I'm not, I'm a former commissioner and I'm a resident, speaking as a resident." And then Commissioner Kulias noted, "99% of the interaction really comes from one individual in the audience when it comes to virtual comments." So I pulled my, I went back and got the agenda from last week, went back and reviewed the tape, 19 items, I spoke on three of them, that's only 15.8%. So again, you keep changing the diameters. Now, lastly, it was made a comment that I come up there with a binder, full of tabs, and take the meeting up. Well, if you go and look at your rules of procedure, y'all get your agendas on Thursday, Thursday, and also Mark started where they had drafted engines before, so you already know by Thursday what's on there. When I was Commissioner Frank, you know, you might have had it, we used to get these big books when, on Friday afternoon by 5:00 PM. Didn't have time to talk to anybody on Thursday or Friday. If we had the agenda before that, we might have drafted it, we would have known what the subjects were to go and talk to them, so we wouldn't have to ask so many questions at a meeting. So that's why I had my binder with flipper notes. And to mischaracterize that I'm the one that takes up all your time, I only spoke on three items, 4, 4, 5, 9, 8, less than 14 minutes of your time. And I don't come here to prophesy, I come here to show you what has been told before of what will come again. Thank you.
Do I have time to saunter? Any other public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Herbert Elliott, I live in Innisbrook, you don't know. I just wanted to thank you for your vote for the Boys and Girls Club. I'm here on a different item tonight, but I came up here a few months ago, and I said I would not be present for that discussion, I was away on vacation out in California. But Boys and Girls Club has been very close to me for 40 or 50 years, and I spent a lot of time getting that settled with the Rotary Club and the city and the Boys and Girls Club. And the vote that you made made a big difference, I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Kulianis, Commissioners, and City Manager Rudd. I wanted to take, oh, Katie Taylor, 657 Haven Place, Tarpon, T-A-R-P-O-N, Springs, Florida, 34689. I wanted to thank you, Mayor Kulianis, City Manager Rudd, and the Commissioners, for moving the exhibit down on Dodo Canis, the sponger, Bahamian sponger exhibit, moving it to the front street, it looks very nice, and you have a sign out there, it looks very nice. We're hoping to make one more adjustment, but we'll discuss that later. But right now, that exhibit looks really nice, and I appreciate you taking the time to move it up front. We look forward to also moving forward and working, continuing to work with parks to relocate the exhibit that's currently on MLK, on the corner of MLK and Gross Avenue at Union Academy, to move that exhibit up to Dorset Park. And City Manager Rudd, thank you for the interactions, you coming to meet with our community when we call you. Thank you for coming out and meeting with the Union Academy neighborhood, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Mr. Austin, is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, okay. All right, so that concludes public comments. Now we're going to go to our quarterly Commission Committee updates. Are there any Commissioners who would like to comment on any of the committees or items that they would like to speak on? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The last couple of meetings that I've been to for Forward Pinellas, I'm just going to bring out some of the important points. I did bring up, there was a spoken about grants and grant programs, and I know that I brought up Tarpon Springs, and in the near future, there will be, with Blanton, we'll be having a meeting with our city manager, if he hasn't had it already, to get a wish list of what he needs to have Forward Pinellas do. So we are, we are on the map, as I'd like to say. But on the interim, I also, in the last, I was at a MPO meeting for the state, and there were probably about 18 some odd people I represented Forward Pinellas. There was myself and Mike Menino from Clearwater that wound up, you know, representing. And if you don't know what an MPO is, it's a, you know, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and it controls between 20 to 50 years out. So some of the things that we decide to do is, it just, it's a planning organization so that probably when we're all out of office, we'll have, you know, people, you know, continuing to do the work that we set up today. So just wanted to, you know, keep you up to date. We have these things called the UPWP, it's a two-year plan. We have a TIP, which is a five-year plan. We have a LRTP, by the way, I didn't memorize all these acronyms. It's a 20-year Horizon Plan, and we also have, like I said, a Long Rage Plan that's out to 2055. So this is something that at least you should know, that you have your, myself for now, and your Board is out there and bringing back information and looking to the future for Tarpon Springs. It is, it hasn't been represented in a while, and now it is being represented, so that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have a committee comment, but I do have an item that I'd like to just take advantage of this time. I received a letter from the, from Pinellas County, and let me read it to you guys. Let me read it to you guys because I need your direction on. And I've placed a copy of a letter that requires my signature, but I don't want to sign it unless I have acquiescence from the board. Okay, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement has indicated that Pinellas County will receive two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars in Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant countywide. The application process has been completed and award recipients approved by the Substance Abuse Advisory Board for the upcoming fiscal year. Letters from local units and government representing at least fifty-one percent of the county population must be submitted to F D L E with funding applications. For your convenience, a sample letter, okay, they've given me this letter. And it needs to be signed by July eleventh. It is for, and the letter states, in compliance with State of Florida Rule eleven D nine of the Florida Administrative Code, the City of Tarpon Springs approves the distribution of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars of federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Countywide Program Funds for the following projects. Now, these projects have been, have already been approved by the county. They require, again, fifty-one percent of the population acquiescing to it. Again, I don't want to sign this unless I have approved from the board to do it. But I have vetted this with the city attorney and also the, the city manager. And they feel appropriate for us to go ahead and participate in this. It's, it's county money, you know, we'll feel the effects of this. I know the police chief could comment on it as well. Would you like to comment on it?
I'd support the signing of it.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so again, is there any issue with any commissioner with me signing this letter? Okay, so I'll take it as tacit approval to go ahead and sign it. Thank you very much. Okay, so now let's go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda item number two, word file, force main cleaning and flow restoration. Number three, attorney fees, Johnson Jackson P L L C. Number four, request for authorization of new location for Bahamian art piece. Number five, special event, Tarpon Springs High School Band Boosters Outdoor Music Festival. Number six, ratify and increase park exercise equipment replacement. And number seven, satisfaction release of liens. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of these items? Vice Mayor has indicated he'd like to pull number four. Anyone else like to pull any other item? Okay, so let's, if, if there is no conversation on this, I'd like to hear a motion to approve consent agenda item two, three, five, six and seven.
So move second.
Okay, no conversation on this. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vayner?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coolianas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, would you like to discuss?
Yes, I don't have a problem with the movement of the art thing. What I have a problem with is as you all have a packet in front of you. We received a letter from one of the applicants and the address on it is not a Tarpon address. And it was signed on June twenty-sixth. And it's a holiday address. And if you look back to almost the last page, I didn't really have this in chronological order. You'll see it's also the same address was dated on nine eleven nineteen seventy-nine. It was on August first, twenty twenty-two. So when I, there's also another address. There's a thirty-seven oh four, there's a thirty-seven sixteen, same street. I need clarification and that's not in the, I don't want a driver's license. I need clarification that the person that is making decisions on any board, not just this board, but any board. If that they are definitively a Tarpon resident before I'm going to approve anything. You can't have somebody sign a legal document six or seven days ago or eight days ago, whatever it was when we got this. And, you know, just say that it wasn't updated by Sunbiz because this is the same address that was back in nineteen seventy-nine and twenty-two. Sunbiz doesn't take eight years or six years or ten years to change things. So personally, I, I don't want to approve this just because of that. I need to make sure that every, and not just this person, but every person needs to. If they're going to move around, they've got to produce that they're here and that they live in Tarpon Springs. So this is my comment. I mean, I can read, if I can see this here, the light isn't great. I hereby certify that the information indicated on this report or supplement report is true and accurate. So evidently it's been denied. So I know that if this was me signing this document, I would put a line through that address and I would put my current address. I wouldn't put an address outside Tarpon Springs. So, you know, it says this has the same legal effect as if under oath. So if this was under oath, that never should have been signed like that. You know, I didn't go on a fishing expedition. This was sent to me and I read everything that gets sent to me and I, I just don't want to go ahead. I'm not going to vote for this until I know that all the people that are on the board are official Tarpon residents. I'm not saying they're not. I just don't have any evidence other than a driver's license. And that to me, you can have a driver's license with any address on it for eight years and you can just keep it that way. It may not be legal and if you get caught driving with a different address, you could get into trouble. But the police at the time, you know, they don't know where you're living. But this is an official document and it was signed by the Secretary of State. It was filed on June twenty-sixth. So on one place or another, there's an error. So I like this clarified and I truthfully down, I spoke to the city manager about having a. Anybody on all boards should be, you know, producing that they live in Tarpon Springs. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, so. Let's, let's have a, I think this is a good opportunity to have a conversation about process and how this function works on, right now, the process. Commissioner Banther, I'll call on you in a second. Let me, let me start it off. So, you know, whether, whether it's a volunteer board or whether it's somebody running for public office. You know, we, right now, the, the vetting is, is done strictly by the city clerk. Whether she asks for a driver's license and a signed affidavit. We've had many, whether, you know, there's. We've had commissioners that were in college that lived, that used their parents' address, right? And they produced a driver's license, signed an affidavit. They have no, they have no, you know, water bill, power bill, lease agreement, you know, practically nothing to prove their residency other than their driver's license and the signature of an affidavit. I, I, I hear what you're saying and I'm not, and everything you're saying is, you know, what is coming from documents and I know to be true. Whether, you know, there could be a difference between somebody's address of residence and their address of convenience. There could be someone who uses a address because, and my understanding is this person, and I don't really don't want to embarrass this person tonight. But there could be, you know, the use of, of their, one of their family members' addresses for their, for convenience and mailing purposes. And yet they reside somewhere else and maybe they're only going to be there temporary. I know of, you know, young people that still use their parents' address to have all their mail delivered. And they even use it to do their tax return, but yet they live somewhere else, but they're not sure they're going to be there that long. So they know they have a stable address at one place. That could be, that could be an answer here. Again, Sunbiz is not the, the, the number one definitive point. We went through that with another whole thing a couple of years ago. But what I, and obviously I'll go to every commissioner for a comment. But I would, if there's a question here, I think that question should be answered by the city clerk. She can have a conversation with the city attorney and come up with a determination. We, I don't think the board of commissioners should be the ones vetting, you know, where somebody is residing. And again, we don't want to be going through, putting volunteer people, which, you know, again, these are volunteers. And vetting them in open forums like this is, is, I think problematic. So I'm going to go ahead and, and move over to one of the commissioners. But I'd be happy with just deferring this item, let the city attorney and the city clerk come to some kind of resolution on it. And then, you know, but that's kind of where I am. So Commissioner Banther, you have anything to say?
Yes, I have some questions. I'm a little confused because I've been following this in my email. And then I called the city clerk and called Mrs. Taylor too to ask her. Irene, has Mrs. Taylor submitted a, a, a driver's license with a Tarpon Springs address?
Yes.
And has she signed the affidavit that everybody has to sign that she lives in Tarpon Springs proper?
There is not an affidavit required that's required for elected commissioners. There's an application at the time. And then it was updated, yes.
But has she met all the proof of residency requirements that we, that we would require of anybody else on a, on a volunteer board?
As we do for boards, yes.
Okay, then my, my confusion comes where I'm trying to figure out why we are singling out, let's just say it. You know, one of the few African-American female volunteers we have. Why is this not being applied across the board to every board member? And when I read the screenshots that I was sent by the city clerk, these texts come from Joan Jennings, who was a former member of that board. I have no idea why, what her motive is or why she sent them in. I don't know. But it just seems to me like Mrs. Taylor, for reasons I don't understand, is being singled out. So if we're going to apply extra scrutiny to Mrs. Taylor, it needs to be to every single volunteer person we have. And that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Di Donato?
I don't have any problems with it, but if you want to verify it further, I suppose we can do that. But this has been discussed before. Somewhat perplexed, but whatever the board should decide now.
Commissioner Coolias?
Yes. City clerk is the Rose Cemetery Organization. Aren't they a private? They're not necessarily.
They are not under the city.
So does the officer or does the, the members on the board have to live in the city according to our charter?
I, that I do not know. I'm not part of Rose Hill and I don't know what their bylaws or their makeup calls for.
Okay, so if, as far as the Cemetery Association, I, I think this is good. Now, if this is, you know, relaying to any other board and the criteria has been met. I don't know. I, I think we should be good unless there's another process that everybody else wants to go through. That's completely, you know, to, I guess, the overall board to decide. But I don't mind having the city clerk look into this as the city attorney. But as I look at this Rose Cemetery, it looks, and they're a private organization. I don't think that characteristic of having to live inside the city applies to them for, for what we're presented in front of us. So I, I don't think there's anything, I think, you know, we have to accept this document as is and move forward.
Okay. May I respond?
Yes, please. Can you, go ahead.
So a number of comments were made here and not all of them are what I brought up in the first place. Nobody went to single anybody out. This was voluntarily a, a document that Rose Cemetery Committee sent to all of us on the board. It wasn't me going out and looking and picking on anybody because they were any different than anyone else. In my, it clearly in this document, the minutes from the Rose Cemetery, and I'm not doubting their committee. So let's, let's get that straight. I'm not doubting their committee. The person is the president, this is the board. I'm not here to talk about that. But I have a signed document on June twenty-sixth that one of the members, who's also a member of our volunteer board, does not live in Tarpon Springs. I did not write this. It was voluntarily sent to me. I read it. It has nothing to do with Joan Jennings. It has nothing to do with anything more than somebody volunteered, the person who I'm questioning whether she lives in Tarpon Springs, sent me a signed document that said, I took an oath that everything on here is true. So, but it's not because now she's saying she doesn't live there. So that's the first thing. The second thing, I did also say, I don't want this to apply to one person. I want this to apply to every volunteer board. I don't want somebody who lives in Holiday or in Hernando or in any town to decide that they have a relative and they send a letter to that house and they say, okay, I want to become a board member because I have a, a letter that was sent there. You cannot decide the items going on in Tarpon Springs if you live elsewhere. So I believe, all I'm asking is, I, I'm happy to defer it until that person produces proper evidence that they're getting an electric bill or whatever it is it takes. A driver's license is no longer a legal document for, for a license, for, for residents. Now, if we need to change that, I also said in my comments that we need to address this in agenda item moving forward on what we can and cannot have as a member. But if you read in the, in the preparation for their meeting, they requested all burial records covering the period twenty-two to twenty-five. The organization certificate book, the minutes of all the board meetings from twenty-two to twenty-five from ideally a, a good win. All documents, communication provided during the meeting with the attorney Perrinich, including proof of membership records for all members from Ms. Leslie King, all finance reports, all bank statements in her procession.
Vice Mayor, can we?
I'm just, I just wanted.
Can we get concise really quick because, because this is a, this is a consent agenda item. I think we're, 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 hold on one second. We're distorting two separate issues. One is, are we going to approve the request to change the location of that Bahamian art piece, which was voted on by that board? I'm sure it didn't come down to a one vote on their board, whether that person is or is not a resident. Then let's have a separate issue. Let's let the city clerk work and get, have some criteria for vetting people. And then we can put it on the agenda at a, at a later date and we can have a much more time to talk about all these things.
All these things were being brought up because I am, I am contesting the comments that are made on this board. That's the only reason I read it.
Okay, thank you. So is, is there a motion to approve consent agenda, agenda item number four?
So move second.
Okay, is there any further comments about the consent agenda, not about any particular member? If not, well, let me, if not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Coolias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No.
Mayor Coolianas?
Yes. Okay, let's go to business item number eight. Increase file number twenty-four zero zero six seven, water meters and associated parts. Mr. Keiger?
Mayor Coolianas, members of the board, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. Today we have before you, again, a relatively simple item. Today, we have before you, again, a relatively simple item for procurement purposes. This is our annual contract for water meters and associated parts. This is a single-source procurement item. We are standardized on Neptune water meters. And we require this contract in place with the local vendor for the, for these products to continue to service and maintain our water meter population. This is really important as it's the cash register for the water and sewer utilities. We have to maintain an accurate cash register and make sure that we're being paid for the services rendered. So with that, we would request that you approve this item.
Okay, are there any, Commissioner, questions of staff? So Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
This is, yeah, how come there's nearly a double in the increase?
We're trying to be proactive about meter replacement. We actually envision potentially putting this, some additional funding in the CIP in the next couple of years. We're currently working on some meter testing as a large initiative, because we've discovered that some of the meters are aging a little bit poorly. So as we work through the meter testing program, we want to have additional resources available to fix those to make sure we're recovering revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. No more, no more questions from me. Vice Mayor?
Is this FEMA resp, will FEMA give us credit for any of these meters? Were they damaged during the storm?
Most of these, I would suspect not. We had some minor, like, issues like post-storms with, you know, like uprooted tree roots and things like that, but that's all been tallied up, and this is largely a proactive, forward-moving activity for maintaining the meter population.
I only ask that because it says, "The sustained damage to water service lines from 2024 hurricanes also increased contract utilization." And so if any of those meters were damaged, don't you think we should put it through on FEMA?
Yeah, we have been tracking all of our expenses related to that. Again, this is the next expenses moving forward, so all those repairs have already been completed. But again, we are anticipating, you know, continuing to focus on the meter population as a proactive measure.
So going back to what the commissioner just said, this has just doubled in value on its own? It went from $350,000 to $700,000, just like that?
We are also experiencing some cost pressures on the parts as a result of, you know, from the supplier. But again, this, we're really more proactively looking at this as part of our, we've just completed our first preliminary meter survey. And there's also a need to continue to have some additional expense allowances in there for like new meter starts, for like new housing and things like that. So we did a little bit of a deep dive on the, on the cost, but we also did put some additional buffer in there so that we can do more proactive work.
Does Ferguson have a monopoly on all of our meters?
They are the sole source supplier in this area for Neptune meters and parts.
Is there anybody else?
No.
So they have a monopoly?
They are, they are the registered vendor for this product in this area. So they have an effective monopoly from the manufacturer. They represent, they're, they're the representative for the manufacturer in this area.
Is it possible we could look into somebody else? Because when you have a monopoly like this, the next meeting we could have it being going to another $350,000, no?
We would not be able to entertain other vendors for this product without changing all of our meters that we currently have. So we would have to change to a different meter manufacturer entirely, which is probably not feasible at this point. That would be a large, multi-billion dollar.
I understand. All I'm asking is, is it possible to get some facts and figures on whether it is possible?
For it to switch suppliers?
Or to at least give them some competition. When you have a monopoly, you know, the question came back. It's, it's become double, and I'm trying to find out that it doesn't double again.
It's, it's not doubling because of the pricing. The, the pricing is established by the manufacturer and, and the vendor. The, again, the increase is due to us, our desire to do more work in these areas, to procure more parts, to complete more work orders, and maintain the, be more proactive in our maintenance activities.
We're increasing updating our meters, basically what we're doing, right? The pace at which we...
Yes, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. We've been conducting some meter testing. This is an important part of maintaining the meter population. And if we don't take care of the cash register, we don't collect all the fees for which we render service. So realistically, there, there is no realistic alternative for an alternative vendor. This Ferguson is the, they are the vendors rep for Neptune in this part of Florida.
So my own, all the other cities use Neptune?
There are several major meter manufacturers. We have standardized on Neptune since, I want to say, 2008. So that's something we can look into, but we do have all of our billing system integrated with Neptune. It would be a significant investment to change. And then you're additionally looking at, most meter manufacturers go through either direct sales from the manufacturer, or some sort of, like, designated vendor representative, and you wind up in the same boat.
If you could, just give it a look. That's all I ask.
We can do that. Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comments? Well, hold on, let me, let me entertain a motion first. Is there a motion to approve item, business item number eight?
No, moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any public comments on this item? Mr. Austin, do we have any soon comments? No, okay. Is there any Commissioner comments? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Business item number nine, award bid for the Elfer Spur Trail Seawall Project. Mr. Robertson?
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director and interim Public Works Director. For this item, we're requesting the board's authorization to award a construction contract to KM2H LLC for the seawall repair and paved trail reconstruction on a segment of the Pinellas Trail. It's known as the Elfer Spur. This is the portion of the trail that's, it's south of the Anclot River, the pedestrian bridge that has remained completely closed for safety reasons for an extended period. The contract amount is $965,000, of which $860,800 has been identified in a request for FEMA project reimbursement. With the new trail extension set to open later this month, I'm excited to get this project under repair and get this repair done. With this repair, trail users are going to finally be able to connect from the Pinellas Trail to Pasco County's Coastal Anclot Trail, and I'm really looking forward to that. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my staff report.
Okay. Are there any Commissioner comments, questions of staff? Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, sir.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No.
Okay, I have no questions as well. Can I entertain a motion to approve business item number 10?
No, moved. Second.
Is there any public comments on this item? Go ahead. Oh, number, oh, number nine. I'm sorry. I apologize. Number nine. Do I need to, we need to restate that motion? No. Mr. Austin? Okay. Let's come back to the board. Is there any board comments?
Yes, Mayor, just want to, I'm happy to see this project go through and now connects the other side of the trail that we spent that money, and it's going to be nice. So it's been a nice, long way for everyone to enjoy exercising. So thank you, Bob, and staff.
Thank you. And any, Vice Mayor?
Is, did you bring this up also to Forward Pinellas, to see if they were willing to kick in any money into this?
No, I did not.
So you asked.
No, I did not bring it forward to Forward Pinellas.
Okay, because I would, if you don't, I will.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Is, is there any reimbursable portion of this?
Yeah, $860,000 is reimbursable from FEMA.
All right, I'm sorry. I missed it.
It's a lot of money.
All right. If there's no further questions on, or no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to business item number 10, internal audit of Public Services, our Golf Division. Mr. Pullos?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I'm placed on the agenda. Audit number 1-0-2025, is audit of the Golf Division. The good news is, there's no findings, so I'll just go through the observations quickly. What I did is, I looked at two major risks that I, that I, that I thought with the Golf Department, and one was the Enterprise Golf Fund that they're funded through, and the other is transactional and reporting risk. The enterprise, the reason I felt that there was risk in the, in the fund itself is, not because it's just an enterprise fund, we have plenty of those, but it's, it's a little different in, as opposed to, say, the utility fund or the sanitation fund, because those are things that are kind of compulsory, you know? Those funds kind of go in the red. Well, you can raise rates, because people, obviously, they need, they need water, they need to get your trash taken out. People don't need to play golf, though. So it's, it's imperative that this fund stays, remains, remains financially healthy. And then transactional and reporting risk, I looked at the cash receipts process. In auditing, we tend to look at two things, and that's frequency and magnitude. And here, the frequency, there's, they do a lot of transactions, sometimes, you know, a thousand a day, but the magnitude's low. But when you see that many transactions, it's, 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 the right thing to do is, is to test those transactions to make sure that the cash receipts process is, is, the controls surrounding it are adequate. So in terms of the enterprise fund, I looked at three key performance indicators, which I think paint a really, a really good picture of the, of the fund. The first one was the golf course utilization rate, and that's basically the number of golf rounds sold, as opposed to the total number of golf course rounds available to sell. And I took the industry average, which kind of, which kind of floats, because there's a lot of different golf course models throughout the U.S., and I kind of averaged those out and got to, got to 55%. And from, and I looked at the last four years for the, these key performance indicators. Excuse me. You can see from 2021 to 2024, we've been from 5% up to 12%, or 17% above the, in the last four years, and that's been growing steadily above the, above the industry average. Industry average has kind of leveled out, but the Tarpon Golf Course has been continuously selling more and more rounds of golf. And they're, they're at a really good spot. I mean, 72% is, is really high. I mean, there's only so many rounds you can conceivably sell because of weather issues and things like that. I mean, when it rains, you can't sell golf. When it's, you know, as hot as it is today, it's hard, it's hard to sell a three or four o'clock teeton. So doing really good in that regard. The second thing I looked at, or the second KPI, was the net revenue per round. This is more of an efficiency revenue, or efficiency measure, because it's looked at on a, on a per-round basis. You can see over the last four years, in 2021, we're making about $5.48 a round, and by '24, that was $12.99 a round. And that's before the recent price increases. Those came into effect starting FY '25. The great thing about that is, once we get to about 63,000 rounds, economies of scale starts kicking in, and, and our expenses actually start dropping. So the cost to produce every additional unit after about 63,000, 63,000 rounds actually starts going down, and the unit being rounds of golf. So then our net revenue, or the profit margins for each additional round starts, they start widening, which is, which is what you want. That, that's ideal. The last one I looked at is operating income, which is more of a bottom-line number. It's not a per-round number, but that feeds directly into the, the course's net cash position. You can see over the last four years, it's gone up substantially. In '21, it was around $302,000, and now, and, and it's more than doubled, actually. And FY '24, it was $760,000, and that rolls up to the total cash position. And mind you, this is not including FY '25, which I know has been, has been a good year as well. They're at over $1.7 million in their, in their net cash position for their, for their fund. So when you, when you look at all three of these KPIs together, I think it paints a pretty, pretty healthy picture of, of the, of the Golf Enterprise Fund. So that was the, that was observation 1A, 1B, and 1C. The second observation, that was just looking at their policies and procedures, and they're, they're, they're up to date. They cover, again, the things, everything from, from inventory management to opening, closing procedures, golf etiquette, employee expectations. The cash receipts process is laid out really well. Like I said, they're, they're up to date and very thorough. The third one, the third observation is, like I mentioned before, about transactional and reporting risk. I looked at the cash receipts process, the controls surrounding those. Typically, those involve three stages, and that's, that's receiving and handling. When I say cash receipts, I don't mean just, just cash. I mean cash, checks, credit cards, all the different payment methods. Usually, there's usually three areas, and that's receiving, depositing, and reconciling. I went and had, I went ahead and added reporting, which is actually done by the Finance Department to give just a, just a broader picture, see if there's any, any areas that need improvement. I'll tell you a quick story. It's the first time I did this. I always send out an engagement letter to the, to the auditee, and I ask for, you know, a bunch of different documents. And they sent me all these documents back, and they sent me one day's worth of closing documents. And this is, you know, in the beginning, I didn't know anything about how, how they, they ran their, their business or anything. And I said, "Well, before I read anything, before I talk to anyone, let me just lay all these out cold, and let me see if I can go through that day and reconcile everything, and make sure everything matches from the transaction to the part where it's, it's actually, can put it into the, into the Navaline system." And I was able to do that cold. So that's, that's, that's not a test to me. That's a test to their cash, cash, cash receipts controls. And you can see there's about two and a half pages worth of things I tested, and there was, there was no exceptions noted on any of those. And so the last observation really wasn't a positive one, but I didn't think it rose to a level of a finding, and I don't know if there's really anything we can really do about it. I'll just read it first, and I'll kind of explain to you my, my thinking behind it. While there are no findings concerning the cash receipts process as a whole, the course can take advantage of its existing technology to reduce data fragmentation. The Rec Department and the Golf Department have POS systems that can feed directly into our ERP system, which is the Navaline system. I believe they're the only two, unless something's changed, I believe they're the only two departments that can actually do that. So it kind of goes straight to Finance, and Finance uploads the files in. Okay, that's, that's good. The one, the one issue that I had was some of the accounting codes, there's a lot of accounting codes that get uploaded, but when it comes to, to green fees, which is just the cost to play golf, there's top-level, top-line data, but not line-item data. So best to just give you an example, and I put this in, in the report. If I asked you, if I said, "Okay, well, how much, how much did we make in green fees last Tuesday?" And let's say it's $10,000. That information is the Navaline. If I wanted to know, "Okay, well, how much of that was 18-hole rounds versus nine-hole rounds versus, you know, like, early-bird special rounds?" They have different pricing tiers, different times of days, and stuff like that. I would actually, that's not in Navaline. That would be in the Club Profit system. So, so that's basically two sets of data. And the whole kind of point of having ERP system is to centralize as much data as possible. It's not, it's not a big deal, but I thought it was, it was worth noting. I don't know if it'd be even worth it at this point to get the accounting codes, to add the accounting codes. I don't know what the process would be, if we'd have to go to the, to the vendor and ask them to do it or not, but I think, I think they're going to look into it. But other than that, though, everything is a very well-run department. I was, I was pleased. These are the audits I love doing, so, when there's no findings. If you have any questions, or you want me to go into detail on any of the other, other observations, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Let me start off with the questions. We're, Commissioner, questions first. So if you know that we're, have plans to build a new clubhouse?
Correct.
So did you do any testing to see what our capacity is? So did you do any testing to see what our capacity is for total play? I know you said that, what was the numbers you had? What was the total number of rounds?
67,000?
67. So what do you believe that course's capacity is?
Oh, gosh, you know, I'm not an expert on that, but I would say probably, gosh, if you could get the 70,000, maybe 71, I'd say that's probably all you could do, given the weather, I mean. Plus, you have to remember, too, that the rates went up. These are based on the previous rates. The rates went up, the board approved them, I think, in November, last November. So if we just stayed at 67,000 rounds with the higher rates, that operating revenue would go way up. Even if we played less rounds, if we sold less rounds, it'd be offset by the increase in fees.
What percentage of play or payments made at the Golf Course are cash?
Oh, that's a good question. Gosh, I don't remember. I haven't looked at this in probably a month and a half.
So in, you know, as an internal control thing, when you have, like the issue we had at the dump, right, with cash being paid. So is there any internal control that, where, let's say, somebody's going, they go, they check in, they would pay in cash, but then they would go to, you know, the, what do you have, like a range guy, right? The, what do they call the guy?
Starter.
Starter, okay. So does a starter keep track of play so that it can be compared with what is coming off the register in the clubhouse?
I don't know, I'm not really sure.
But could you find out the percent?
Absolutely.
On cash, and then, like, what is the procedure to? You know, you're always going to have some law, somebody can go ahead and go out and play. And the guy at the starter, he could just say, "Yeah, go play."
Right, right.
So you're always going to have that. But there should be some internal control thing between the going and registering in the clubhouse and then going to the starter. If he keeps track of play, and then you got the inside, you could compare the numbers to see.
Correct.
You know, there should be the same number of guys registering to go out, and those guys starting.
Right, right, yeah, because you go in and you pay at the clubhouse, and then, I don't know if they can remember if they give you a ticket or what, then you go to the starter, but, yeah, there's, I don't know if there's a control to keep maybe the starters, you know, next-door neighbor from just walking up and playing.
Yeah, that could happen, but at least you'd know that there's no shenanigans going on inside the clubhouse.
Correct, correct, yeah. They have a good division, they have a good separation of duties. Everything's signed off and reconciled by different people, and that's.
You felt comfortable with that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Could something happen? There's no perfect controls, yes, but I feel, I mean, they're pretty strong, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
Thank you for this. Was there something that prompted this audit, or was it just part of your standard review process?
Just part of my plan, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I just want to thank you for your report, and I'm happy to see that the course has definitely been improved, and the usage is also growing as well. And I think that the addition of the new clubhouse can add to that as well, but thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, just thank you for the report, thanks for recreation, public services. Howard Hine, head of the Golf Course, he's really, him and staff have really turned it around. You see, it's making good money every year. And you've put in the report how the clubhouse is really outdated, and a new clubhouse will be paid back, costs about $4.3 million, but it will be paid back annually at $445,000 from the same golf course revenue fund, so it will pay for itself, and it's only going to get better. So I'm happy to see this, and congrats to everyone involved who's helped really bring it up and back to its great life. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I always love getting a report that says there's no issues, so I do want to thank you, and I want to thank everybody involved. You know, this is a, I did do a couple of meetings with the Citizens Academy there, and it is a relic of a place, you know, you do go back in time. Lucky I still remember that time, so I felt I fit in there pretty well. But, you know, I'm happy to see that it moving forward, and, you know, I always appreciate, you know, your in-depth report and that there was no issues other than, you know, just an observation. So observations are good.
Absolutely.
Bad findings are not good, and I always love that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Business Item Number 10.
Go move.
Second. Are there any public comments? Mr. Austin?
Mayor, the Zoom comment is not working.
What's that?
They're working on repairing the Zoom comments.
Oh, okay, all right. Come back to the board, if there's no comments, further comments? Let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Polianis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pullos, it was a great job, thank you. Let's go to Business Item Number 11, consideration of refund for impact fee and cost of sewer line installation. Theodora Mihalakis, 312 East Orange Street. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. You all have in your packet the history of this case. We did meet with Ms. Mihalakis and her attorney, and we offered to refund the impact fee, but not the plumber's fees, and they asked to come before you and request the entire amount be refunded to you, so that's why.
How much was the refund you were offering?
The, what was the impact fee?
The impact fee was $200, I'm sorry, $2,865, and there was initial request for a $3,600 private construction costs.
We have the applicant here's.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elliott, we'd like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Hager, did you want to speak on this first?
Yes.
I apologize, I apologize.
Yeah, I'll provide a quick summary. So this is a little bit of a longer-running issue that predates, you know, this board and also the city manager. Essentially, this relates back to work that was started in 2021 and completed in 2022. The gist of it is that there was, historically, been two property at 312 East Orange Street. It's historically been a multifamily residential property with a sort of garage apartment in the back. This parcel was subdivided, you know, looking back through the property praiser records, roughly around 1980, so it's been subdivided for a while, but it was all under common ownership, so it was managed under common ownership. And back parcel had the same address. So then, in 2021, the larger front parcel was sold, and the property, the original property owner, Ms. Mihalakis, retained ownership of the back parcel as a separate residential property. And after the sale, the property owner of the back parcel wanted to establish a new utility account, a new water service for the back parcel, because, you know, the new front parcel was under different ownership now. And it came before the city for the new sewer, the new water account, and it was found that she needed to, if you want to have a water meter, you need to have sewer service as well. And this was reviewed by previous city attorney Trask, and also by current city attorney, Mr. Salzman. And both agree that, yes, this is what the code requires, that if you're going to establish a new utility account for water, you also need to have a sewer connection. And so she was required to establish a sewer connection for the separate and independent account and the separate and independent parcel. So they completed, the property owner completed this work with a private contractor. She established new account. And then later, in 2023, Mr. Elliott came in the picture on behalf of the property owner, requesting reimbursement for the impact, the sewer impact fee, and also the previously completed sewer lateral install, which was private and on private property for the parcel and only served that parcel. Again, Mr. Salzman reviewed the case, and he provided guidance that this is what was required by code, and we hadn't done anything erroneous, and that therefore the fee should stand. And it was dismissed by the previous city manager. And then, again, in early 2025, Mr. Elliott brought this back forward again for additional consideration. And we had a meeting with Mr. Elliott and the property owner in March 2025 to discuss the issue, and as a sort of, like, you know, goodwill recommendation to sort of put this issue to bed, the city attorney recommended, "Well, why don't we go ahead and just refund the sewer impact fee? That's within the board's discretion." But, you know, the rest of it was private work on private property by a private contractor hired by a private individual, and that we don't want to establish any precedent towards paying for private work on private property for local sewer, local water and sewer stuff that's essentially plumbing work for the property. So a few other facts, there was no pressure applied through utility service. Just to be very clear about that, at no time was water or sewer service to the back residential parcel disrupted. So she continued to have water and sewer service continually throughout all of her discussions with the cities. There wasn't any leverage applied that way. And again, we also want to reiterate that the new water and sewer service established for that back parcel was a result of a voluntary subdivision by the property owner of the original parcel. So this would normally be, no pun intended, part and parcel to subdividing a property and establishing two residences. So with that, we're recommending that as a goodwill effort, we will refund the sewer impact fee, but we're not recommending additional refunds for reimbursement done by the private contractor on the private property.
Thank you. Are there any questions of either the city manager or Mr. Keiger? Okay, Mr. Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm here requesting a correction that the city improperly required a new wastewater connection for a building that has been legally connected to the city wastewater collection system for over 100 years. The property's on Orange Street, as Tom said, near Ring, four units in front and one in the rear. And my client sold the four in the front. Is Mr. Price here? I invited him, he was the purchaser of the front four units. In any event, my client paid on a protest $6,465. There's no evidence of any septic tank system ever been there. All agree that the back unit was connected to the city wastewater treatment plant. The issue is, is the back unit legally connected? I submit it was after the sale to Mr. and Mrs. Price in the front. The staff has admitted that there's no impact fee required. That's a key admission, that there's no growth. You can only impose an impact fee on new growth. The fact that there was new growth, no new growth, there's no impact fee required, and therefore, the property was always connected, and it's still connected. It was connected until this new sewer lateral was put in, insisted upon by the city in order for my client to use her property. I grant you that there was some grace period during which my client had to hire the contractor to do the work. Incidentally, one commissioner asked me, "Do we have a sewer plant back in 1925?" And we did. When I was city attorney, there was an ordinance, the oldest ordinance on the books at that time, in 1918, I believe it was, ordinance number 11, that required connection to the city wastewater treatment plant if your property was within, I think, 200 feet of a lateral. So a little historical information. Pursuant to the sale agreement, Lola, my client, had to get her own water connection that was fine. She went, and the city exacted the requirement to get a new sewer connection, even though it was already connected and working fine. In the backup is the city ordinance in question. And I'd like to quote that ordinance, if I may, if you could find it in your backup. The first sentence is underlined, highlighted. I won't read that. But they skipped the definition of what fronting or abutting means. In the second part of that subparagraph A, for the record, section 136.02A of the Land Development Code, quote, "Fronting or abutting shall mean where the property in question shares all or part of a common lot line with a right-of-way or easement that contains a public gravity sewer line." So the issue is, was there an easement to connect to the city wastewater treatment plant along Orange Street? I believe that there was, it's in your backup. Mr. and Mrs. Price gave my clients an easement to connect to the city wastewater treatment plant at that same location. There was no legal requirement to make a new one, in my opinion. I'd like to back up and discuss easements a little bit, and I apologize, the staff all know what easements are, but for the benefit of the public, an easement doesn't get enough credit in the world of real estate, but it's a permanent right for one parcel, sometimes personal, public right, as in right-of-way, to use another parcel for a specific purpose. Parking, water, sewer, open drainage, sheet drainage, electric cable, sidewalks, air rights. If you purchase any property around Tampa Airport, you know, there's like an eight-mile radius of an air right easement that's subject to, when you buy your property, you have an air right easement, and people are surprised about that. So in any event, there's an easement that exists, and it complies, in my opinion, with the Code of Ordinances. A right-of-way is a kind of an easement. The old city attorney thought it was different, but the statutes and the court cases have always said a right-of-way is a kind of an easement. Anyway, the city specifically permits connection via an easement, as was done in this case. Chief, if you could pass out the one little sheet that I have for the benefit of the public and the city commission. I tried to search my memory for an instance where this was done in the past. Now, it's very hard to do unless you've had 50 years of real estate experience in Tarpon Springs. And I remembered one such example. In 1985, you've seen it, I've given you a copy of an easement from what was then, there's, this is two buildings between the hospital and the gas station along Alternate 19. The Dashers gave Dr. Carson and his partner, the Hylers, an easement for sewer connection, and also the property next door, my clients, Jimmy Aravenides and John Stamathus, a sewer easement. So their sewer pipe, and I was there when it was dug, went across Carson's property, Aravenides' property, and the Dasher gas station to connect to the city sewer manhole. For gravity purposes, you got to have gravity, you can't tap into a force main very easily. Not a good idea. So to get gravity, like in a shopping center, I've given you an example of one shopping center title commitment on the back page of that. Shopping center out parcels, they're full of easements. Standard procedure, and it's been standard procedure in Tarpon Springs. The example I've given you is from 1985. I'm sure there are lots of others, but that's one that came to mind. So based upon the law and the precedent, now, the staff is saying it's a bad precedent to do this. The precedent was established, for example, in 1985, and for hundreds of years before that, when people were allowed to use easements to connect to public facilities. And we all know that. And that's what my clients did, the easement is there in your backup. It was done in 2022. We've been trying to get this money back for three years. And I would respectfully request that the city accede to my client's request and grant the $3,060, I believe it was, whatever, for the sewer connection, $3,600 for the sewer connection. I appreciate the staff is agreeing to give us back the impact fee, which is the admission that there was no growth, and it was already connected. And that's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to allow, I want our staff to respond to Mr. Elliott's assertions. City manager?
Yeah, Tommy, wasn't the issue that her sewer was still running through the other sewer? So if their sewer got shut off, hers would be shut off?
Yes, that's exactly the issue, was it was, we basically had two residential parcels, one of one of the other, and they were going to be sharing a common sewer plumbing system. And so this was reviewed, like I said, we sent it, this was before my time as director, so it was sent to the city attorney at the time, it was rereviewed by Mr. Salzman, and this was the, found to be the interpretation of the code. and this was the, found to be the interpretation of the code was that, you know, if you're gonna have two different accounts, you need to have two different sewer lines and two different establishments, and two different, two water lines, two sewer lines, one to serve each parcel, and that it was not within the code to allow them to flow the water through the other building's plumbing system.
City attorney?
Mayor, I just want to be clear. The total amount here is over $6,000. The offer that was made by the city to resolve this was to refund the $2,865. That offer was rejected. So right now, there is no offer on the table for any amount. So if the board so chooses, you would have to approve $2,865 or some other number. But that offer was made to try to resolve this, and that was rejected by Mr. Elliott's client. So there is no agreement to pay, to return any money at this time. I just want the board to be clear on any decision they make.
Let me go to Commissioner questions of staff or the applicant's attorney. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I did speak with Mr. Elliott prior to educate myself on this from his perspective. Mr. Kiger, is, so is there something in our code that prohibits people from sharing a sewer line?
That was the interpretation in this case, yes.
Okay. And there's, is there an established easement that this applicant or individual has with the other property for this, for this sewer line?
My understanding, again, this was before my time as the director, but was that they established the easement as a way to try and get the sewer, to maintain sewer access through the other buildings.
Is that correct, Mr. Elliott? Is that correct, briefly, if you don't mind?
To explain briefly, the city has numerous examples of people tapping into private sewer lines. The Carson example is one. There are lots of others. There's no meter on a sewer.
Correct.
You don't care which direction it comes from. Some of what Mr. Kiger has said is correct, but he's also, in their recommendation, recommend just granting the impact fee. So I would correct the city attorney in saying that is the recommendation from the staff. That's what was recommended, Mr. Elliott, at our meeting to resolve this. Thank you for the interruption, Mr. Salzman. But because you're misstating the facts, the facts was, that was an offer that was made that was rejected. So whether he's recommending it or not, that's up to the board.
Let me, my line of questioning, please. Mr. Kiger, so the city offered initially to refund the impact fee, is that, you know, I've not seen, and it could be just, I'm unaware, we don't often do that, correct? It's not a common occurrence that we are, we are, we are refunding impact fees?
We would normally not recommend that, yet. This was done as a goodwill gesture.
And I appreciate that, and I do support that. But the issue I'm trying to tackle is, because that's so rare, by the city doing that, while I'm sure our city attorney would attest, it doesn't mean we are legally admitting anything. It does raise the question to me that there, that there might be a mistake on that part of the city, and that's what I'm trying to battle with here. Because on the surface, when I see the city willing to refund the impact fee, that tells me, at least from my limited knowledge, that we made a mistake in forcing this new, new sewer connection. Because why else would we just refund an impact fee? That hardly ever happens. So does the city attorney, can, can you, can you educate me on that? Am I missing something here?
No, Commissioner, we, we're not, it was really a goodwill gesture, nothing more than that. Mr. Elliott has attempted for a period of time to have this resolved, the prior city manager, prior city attorney didn't necessarily agree. We looked at this, we met with him, and in an effort to try to just, you know, the city to do a nice gesture in this situation, there were some financial issues that were raised, that the, that was, this was extremely harmful for somebody, for the applicant and their financial position, and that was the sole reason. There's no admission whatsoever that the city did anything wrong.
Thank you for that, for that. And my last question for Mr. Elliott is, so currently, is she hooked up on her own sewer system, thus this fee she paid and the impact fee she paid?
Yes. That lateral into Ring Avenue is there, but so is the other one, the original one.
That she could have used, but she's not hooked up.
Exactly.
And that's your position, that she was required to do these extra steps, and she should not have been?
Exactly. We had an easement, as required by the code and required by past practice, to do.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner DiDonato?
That was basically my end too, was the confusion there. So I cleared that up.
Commissioner Goulias?
Mr. Elliott, 1985 was the closest, the most recent precedent you can come up with?
Searching my memory, which is getting very vague over time.
What?
Yes.
Was it your memory, or you went back in the laws?
I was there when this happened. It's very unusual, but it's legal for an easement to be used, and I've given you countless examples of people using easements, and it's permitted by the code. You don't need to have your property right-of-way line adjacent to your own property. You can use an easement, and it's done repeatedly. That's why the code allows it.
So she separated the property, correct? The back is its own separate entity, basically, its own separate property?
On paper, yes. She owns, she owns her residence, yes.
So who's going to receive, who's gonna pay for the sewer disposal fee, the stormwater fee? Who's splitting that cost between the front and then the back, if it's all being ran through one?
The city has no meter for sewage, Commissioner. So whether it goes into Orange Street or goes into Ring, it makes no difference to the city. You get it, just as if it was a five-unit building, as it was for 95 years. And now it's four units in the front and one in the back, and the pipes are still there, and they can still be used. I don't understa, you understand what I'm saying? Maybe I'm not saying it very well. But the property owner is willing to pay for a water bill. That's okay, because the owner of the four units didn't want to pay her water bill. So she paid for a water meter. But the sewage can stay where it was. That's what the easement says.
So the client, who has the building in the back, is paying for the water for the building up in the front?
No, no, just in the back. There's a separate meter for the back. We're not an issue over that. She has a separate water bill for her unit.
Okay, and sewer and disposal, she gets charged that through the water bill, correct?
Yes. That's okay. We're, we're okay with that. The issue is the cost unnecessarily illegally imposed of the construction of the sewer lateral, the $3,600.
Why was it illegally imposed? I mean, she separated two entities.
Because the code says you're allowed to use an easement.
Yeah, but she's created her own property. She's, she's gotta create the billing and all the infrastructure to go through there separately, and the city runs this type of stuff all the time.
That was under protest, Commissioner. She did that under protest. The owner of the four units in the front was perfectly willing, and still is, to allow the water flow to go through to Orange Street.
Well, I'm just gonna kindly tell you that she don't accept that $2,800. She's not gonna get nothing, at least from me. And I know she's a great lady, but I'm not setting precedent. You can ask Mr. Kiger. I fight for people all the time to pay, to have the city extend water within the code supposedly, and/or sewer lines within the code, and plenty of times, big money amounts got shot down. So I can't, this is very goodwill for this impact fee, which I'll support, but above and beyond private contractor, private property, easement or not, easement or not, I don't understand the issue here, sir. So what I'm telling you, 1985, it's 38 years ago. It's a long time ago. That ain't the precedent I'm gonna go off.
The code was still in effect then, as same is now.
Unfortunately, she separated the property.
He was, he was to connect to city sewer.
She separated the property, sir. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna support her receiving that goodwill impact fee, but nothing more, because then we're gonna have to do it to everybody. And there's people who, I'm telling you, I've had many people come to me about this very exact situation, who I've relayed and spent months talking with Mr. Kiger on this type of stuff. There's another issue that's coming up on another property that I've forwarded it all, and I gotta let staff take their course on it. So I'll support the $2,800, but nothing more. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have to make a little correction here. We do have sewer meters, correct?
We typically don't do that. Like, for residential, it's, okay.
I'm well aware what we typically do, but we do have them, correct?
I'd have to double-check, but I think we might have a.
Let me explain to you why we have them. People fill pools, and they wanna pay for the water going in, but they don't wanna pay for the return water. You put in a meter, and it tells you how much goes versus goes in versus goes out. So I do need to clarify, there is such a thing. Tommy, if you don't know it, you do now. I'm just gonna tell you.
If it's possible to meter sewage, yes.
Okay. And, and we do that because people don't wanna pay both ways. My question that I have beside that is, this, these pipes were put on an easement, or they were put on private property?
The new pipe?
Yes.
The new pipe goes down the alley behind her house into Ring Avenue, I believe.
That wasn't my question. My question was, did the new pipes go on her private property or on the easement?
The easement from the prices?
From whatever the plumber put in. Did he do this on private property, or was it done on the easement? Because there's two things. Easement is a sharing of land that it doesn't, nobody owns it. Well, people own it, but they, it is utilized for the city to be able to go back in and repair and replace. The city does.
It's not a public easement. This is a private easement, which is a legal, a legal document.
I know. I live, I have a private easement on my property, so I understand what it is. My point again is, was the plumbing put in on her, on her property?
She was forced to put pipes on her property to connect down the alley on public right-of-way into Ring Avenue.
So what would have happened if she did not do that?
Well, what she wanted was to leave it the way it was. That's what the neighbors wanted also.
Okay. So if she left it like that, what would have happened?
Well, we got letters from the city engineers saying, you better do it, or else we're gonna, I don't, cut you off or stop your water.
How could you cut off a sewer?
Well, the health department won't allow you to do that, but they can certainly turn off your water. I can show you Mr. Smith's letter. It's in your backup, probably, the allegation that you needed to get a new sewer line, which we did not agree to. We fully agreed to the water line and to payment of all the water bills, which includes a sewer charge as well for user fees.
Okay.
Our problem is with the construction.
My question then would be, I get a letter from Paul Smith stating that we need a new sewer line, and you have to pay it. Why at that point did you not say, I don't know why, whether you were involved or whoever, saying, I don't have the money, or I don't believe that I should do this, so I need to have a hearing on that then, before she put it in the ground? Because we're now discussing the aftermath, if you understand where I'm going. It's done, it's paid for, and now we're discussing who should be responsible for what's already done. It's so hard to do that. It's so much easier to discuss the wherewithal before the pipe is put in the ground.
Commissioner, going back three years ago, I tried that. The city manager refused. Maybe you're aware of that. I tried to get on the city commission agenda. That was refused. Now we're here three years later, thankfully to the city manager. I appreciate that. This has been hanging fire for three years.
What I'm having a hard.
She couldn't just come to the city commission and say, I don't think I'm required to put in a new sewer lateral. She had to flush her toilet.
Yeah, but it was still working, as you said earlier.
Yes, that's true.
So she could flush the toilet. My point is, if somebody sent me a letter like that, my response would be, take me to court. I would say, or you need to sue me to, to, I don't have the money, or I don't wanna pay it, and.
Now, Commissioner, she wants to say something, but the water, she had to get new water. She was agreeing to do that. The city said, before we give you a water meter, you have to put in a new sewer lateral.
So they.
So they were tied together. That's the problem.
So in order for you to get a new water meter, you had to agree and place a sewer system in?
Yes, they forced me to do that. Yes, they said.
If you're gonna speak, you must come up and do your name and address. Thank you.
Theodora Mialakis, 312 East Orange Street. They did tell me, you cannot have water if you don't agree to do the sewers also. We cannot allow you to have any water. So they forced me to do it. They didn't ask me if I have the money or not. They just forced me. So I had to borrow the money to do that. Thank you.
So let me ask you then the next question. How were you getting the water prior to the request? Wasn't it coming through, wasn't it all coming through one meter?
Yes. She owned all five units.
Right. So did somebody cut off the water to all five units?
No. The city graciously let us continue to use the back unit, ending this discussion. But after a while, we had to make a decision, and she was told to get a new sewer line in order to get water.
Okay. But she agreed to that?
No, under protest.
Whether it's under protest or not, it's agreed to?
Someone puts, I don't wanna get too emotional, but it was under protest.
Don't get emotional. My point I'm trying to make is, if somebody put the emotional gun to my head and said, you can't do this, why at that point do you not say, I'm not pulling the meter, I'm not putting a meter in, I'm not doing a sewer, unless the city covers this?
May I say something?
Of course.
Because I sold the house, and I'm supposed to move in the back home, the home in the back, okay? So I couldn't move over there if I didn't have any water, because the other guy, he wants me to put my own water on, okay? So I have to use water in order to live in that place. So they use that excuse. I came back and forth to them. They use that excuse to force me to do the sewers. Even the people who connect me from the city, they say to me, you don't have to connect it. It's okay. Doesn't matter. But I have to connect it because they have to come and check it out and see if I did, if I did it. So I had no choice. I had to move to my own place because I sold the building. So I didn't have any choice. If you think I had, I'm sorry, I didn't know any other way.
Another minor point, but it's still valid at the time. It was COVID, middle of COVID, and things kinda got derailed during those two years.
So the only thing I can say is, I understand there was maybe a little pressure put on, and whether it's a little pressure, a lot of pressure, but you still have a situation that, you know, you need to have separate sewer system. I know you're saying you don't, but I know that if you sell that property and the next person needs to put a return meter on, which is available, they need to have their own pipes so that they know what water is going in and what going out. And I just want you to explain something. Some people water their lawns out of wells. Some people water their lawns right out of the RO plant. And if you water your lawn a lot and somebody else doesn't, you would be the one that wanna put a return meter on because you don't wanna pay for that water going both ways. I don't know if this is that much of a cost that, you know, we cannot pick up the cost, or we cannot pay for private sewer work.
Commissioner, if I may, all I'm asking you to is follow your own ordinances.
Let's do this.
You're allowed to have an easement.
Let's get a.
It's a private easement. It runs with the land. It's permanent.
We got you. Okay, let's, I'd like to entertain a motion on this. I'm not.
I'll entertain a motion to grant the impact fees and nothing more.
Do you want to stay a few minutes? Is there a second?
I can't see the amount of funding.
The amount, yeah, $2,865.
And the amount of $2,000.
$865. Is there a second on that?
Six.
Second, okay. I'd entertain another motion.
I would motion to refund the complete amount, because it appears to me this was done by mistake, and I have my calculator out, and that is $6,465.
Is there a second on that?
Oh, second.
Okay. So let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this? Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Austin, any public comment? Do you have your system working up there? No. Okay. So let's come back to the board now for commissioner comments. Let me go first. So I, okay, so I'm just trying to make this as simple so that I understand it because I'm no expert on these items, but you got your neighbor and you sharing a sewer line going directly into the system. So if my neighbor, if my neighbor shuts me off somehow, I've got no access to the sewer. So I'm not asking you for to comment. This is for our own comment. So I'm, this is my own process here. So asking somebody to access the sewer that has now subdivided their property seems like a reasonable request of the city, right? You would have, you wouldn't share a sewer line with, from your property with your neighbor going into the line in the street. I don't know if I'm, and when any other commissioner gets their chance to talk, they can correct me on that. The other thing is, I, I mean, I wish that Commissioner Kulias's motion was approved because I think, but kind of have put us in a spot where you're saying that if we give you the impact fee refund, you're saying it's, we're admitting of some guilt. I mean, you said that. You said that. You said it. So I don't want you, I don't need you to-
I can't respond?
No, not yet. So, no. So later, it's over. So, so, you know, I'm, you know, we, you know, we have our staff. I'm sure that city manager, Lacouris, you know, is, was, he was a fair man, and I'm sure he would have taken care of that if he thought that was warranted. I mean, I don't think we asked anybody about any, I know this isn't quasi judicial, but whether ex parte, but there was, you know, conversations about more of a need-based situation, right? Like, I, you know, okay, so that's kind of what my conversation with you kind of went to, but it doesn't appear to be that here. And then, you know, you have this information about easements and such, but were the, these easements appear to have been established prior to the tap-in for Arvinitas and Carson, where this easement was established by the city, right? We established this easement. There was no easement there to start with at the spot before the-
May I respond?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
This is a private easement. And I'll just read one sentence. "Grant to her to hereby, without consideration, grant parcel B," that's her property, "a permanent easement for sanitary sewer, shared by parcels A and B, at the same location and to the same extent, as such has been utilized for the past several decades." So it's a permanent easement that runs with the land. Nobody can cut anybody off. They're allowed to stay there. If one property is sold, it runs with the land. It stays in a place.
So city man, city attorney, when you looked over all this, all this information, and did you believe that the refunding of the impact fees, though not a admission of guilt, was a fair resolution and?
Well, it wasn't just me. The city manager and I-
And the city-
And Tom, we all sat there and said, "In all due respect to Mr. Elliott, who made the argument," we were also told of financial need, and so we tried to, you know, do something that we felt was appropriate.
And what concerns me, and then I'll go to Commissioner Banther, but what concerns me is, is we had a prior administration with our city manager who did not feel that he, that this should be done. And now we have our staff, we have our attorney, we have our city manager, we have our director, all saying that, okay, at best, we would do this refund of the impact fee. I'm just, you know, I appreciate everything you said, and I appreciate your client, you know, but I have an issue with overriding all these professionals that we have on our staff and just giving those monies. So I'll go to Commissioner Banther.
Thank you. First, I'll say, obviously, my reasoning behind the motion was, I believe, from what I've been told by city staff and Mr. Elliott and hearing, and hearing the applicant speak, that she was required to hook up to city sewer and not use an easement she could have used through the neighboring property that she had just sold. Therefore, this was compulsory, and she should not have been, have been, have been, have been required to. I know this is not court. We're not requiring who's guilty or innocent, but that's just for the record. And I know the city is graciously offering the refund of the sewer impact fee. To me, that implies that the city incorrectly required this applicant to hook up. That's why I did my motion for the full amount. I deal with easements every day. I'm in a legal battle for one right now up at my farm. This is very common occurrence, and, you know, I do believe this was an error on the city part. That being said, not to put the vice mayor in the hot seat, but if the vice mayor is not in support of that, I'd rather her get something than nothing, and I'll happily withdraw my motion. Commissioner Kulias can redo his, and I'll second that. You know, I'm not saying it's all or nothing. In my view, the city erred, and we should give back all the money, the money that she had to pay privately because of the forced connection. But if that's not the will of the majority of the board, I'm happy to withdraw the motion, have Commissioner Kulias redo his, and I'll second that happily, so.
Commissioner DiDonato, will you withdraw your second?
Well, I, I feel very much the same way as Commissioner Banther just stated. And this is no disrespect, and as far as I'm concerned, to any party, both past and present, as for city staff and/or the applicant. I, I just, something doesn't smell right, so to speak. And I don't, I don't know where fault lies, but if you didn't have to connect, why, why would they made to connect? That's the part that bothers me. I personally think that it should be the full amount, but I, rather than see it die and not get any, I'll consider, but I firmly believe that it's okay to make mistakes. It's just not okay to keep making that mistake. That's, none of us are flawless here. And I still remember without a gentleman called by the name of Kethro Powell, if he hadn't have been around, the city wouldn't have known where all of those pipes and sewers and whatnot were. He was the map. Maybe that's a fault of getting hair like this, but I'm just saying, we've come a long way. We have to make sometimes recognize that we're in a much better state today because now we know where pretty much all of them are, and at one time, wasn't that long ago, that we didn't. So I just see something that bothers me, and so I tend to lean towards the full amount. But again, I'm not here to slow it down any further than, but I wanted to explain that part of it.
Are you willing to withdraw your second?
I'd like to have the motion voted on. If it dies, then we can try a different motion.
Not your doing. Are you, he asked if you would pull back your second.
I always, I don't think you-
Have you?
If I do, I still may not support the motion, but if in the essence of moving forward, I'll do that.
Rule simple, if the commissioner Eisner, or sorry, Vice Mayor doesn't support the full amount, I'll withdraw. He withdraws, Commissioner Kulias can redo, redo, redo his, and we move on.
Okay.
And again, I'm not trying to put him in the hot seat, but it's just the math. I mean-
Commissioner Kulias?
I just think it's, what's going on is fair. I mean, you're gonna get the impact fees, you bring up something from 1985, I mean, a precedent from back then. I don't work on precedents back then. I work on precedents now in our modern day of our community, so.
It's been hundreds of years, Commissioner. That's just one example that came to mind.
That's the only one you brought forward, and so what's gonna happen, sir?
I brought you an example of what the city's been doing for hundreds of years.
You're a former city attorney. Let me speak.
Commissioner, would you like to make your motion, please?
We allow this to you. We have other properties with very similar situations. We're gonna come back and ask for this type of stuff.
Withdrawn.
And so what I would say is-
They've all been withdrawn?
Yes.
All right.
Can I speak before you make the motion?
He's making a motion.
They haven't withdrawn anything yet. I'm waiting to hear.
That's right. I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, I'm just saying I'm willing to. Vice Mayor Eisner is not in support. That's all I would say.
And what I would say is, Mayor, turn this down. You can pass the gavel over, make the motion, I'll second it, and I'm sure either Commissioner Banther or DiDonato will support it at that point for the impact.
Vice Mayor, you want to move in?
I have a question. If either of these sewer lines break, who repairs it?
The property owner.
And thank you, that's what I wanted to hear, because that's why it had to be dedicated to each one, and that is the important thing. So I do not support the full amount, but I'm in the middle of this. She's come in good faith, he's come in good faith, and I'd like to have a number somewhere between full and, and, you know, and not to admit guilt, but just to appease so we could move on. And I'll make a motion-
I have to withdraw my first, Vice Mayor.
Great. So we have a motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
And the second has been withdrawn-
Okay.
-for the sake of-
So, I mean, I, I would probably do a motion to something like $4,000 inclusive, and so we could just, you know, it's not what, the full amount, it's not the half amount.
Admit my motion or want me to?
No, he, no, no. He's making a brand-new motion.
I made a new motion for $4,000. It does supplement some of the lawyer fees.
Explain why. You just make the motion.
Second. Is there a second?
Okay. Is there any public comment on this motion, not the applicant? Any public comment on this motion? Mr. Austin?
Still not working.
Still not working? Okay. Let's go to roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianus?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do a five-minute break?
Yes, let's take a five-minute break. Well, let's make it 10. Come back at 8:40.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Good evening.
You're welcome, Charlie. Good evening.
Commissioners, I'll start getting ready to sit down. We have a chance, we have a chance. Here's going to be... Things give them one more minute. Oh, I brought you a Volvo, but I ate it. Sorry. I deserved that. You ate that. Okay, let's go ahead and resume the meeting. So let's go to business item number 12, utility lien reduction request at 1145 River Ridge Drive. City Attorney?
Mayor Commissioners, the board probably remembers this property. This is the one we dealt with a few months ago, dealing with a code reduction. And the code reduction fine was brought down to $25,000 and paid. If you recall, at that time, there was a question brought up about the utility lien, which the then property owner said that he would pay. Well, he didn't. And the property went through foreclosure. And the new property owners are asking that the utility lien be reduced. Now, it's fair to tell you that the utility lien law, according to the Attorney General, is that the lien lasts for five years. So in essence, this lien would actually be expunged. But they are willing to pay an amount to show good faith, to take care of this issue. And that's what we're here on. Now, just so the board knows, we are going to go back to the Attorney General and try to get a clarification because we were under the understanding that the utility lien lasted as the other liens, which would be for 20 years and could be renewed. But we did find Attorney General opinion on point. And so I think it's fair to say that in this case, based on the Attorney General opinion, any payment by the current property owners is gratuitous on their part.
Okay. Would the applicant like to say something?
Yes, thank you for letting us be heard. My name's Dale Hunter, and my business partners Justin Ostal and Michael Hernandez. We're local, born and raised. We're here requesting the removal.
Do you mind stating your address for the city clerk?
Yeah, it's 1145 River Edge Drive. We're here to request the removal of the utility lien. We haven't been able to clean up the property or start renovations because the utility department requested the payoff of the lien to set up water. The city liens were foreclosed on, as the city attorney Salzman spoke of, in the foreclosure case that happened back in May. And additionally, the lien is expired and unenforceable per Florida statute section 95.112. So we tried to resolve this through the admin, but we were told we needed a commissioner's approval to have this lien removed. The property has numerous HOA violations and was in code violations, as you spoke of. And it's an eyesore for the community. We'd like to get started on this work as soon as possible and request your removal of the lien.
Thank you. Are there any questions of either the city attorney or the applicant? Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do. When you bought this property, you didn't know there was a lien on it? Or you didn't know there was a lien on it?
We saw the history of a lien originally filed in 2014. But knowing that there's Florida statute limitations, also being in the city of Tarpon Springs was named in the foreclosure case, those usually get removed.
It makes for sticky, you know, substance circumstance because we then were lied to by the, of course, not you, but, you know, that we were going to be paid, so... Okay, that's the only question I have right now.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the reduction to $2,286.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Is there any public comment other than the applicant? Okay, and Zoom's not working. So let's come back to the board. If there's no comments, are we okay to go to roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
One question. If we wanted to resolve this, can we make payment to the clerk tomorrow? Would that be on record? We can get this cleared up?
The city manager can answer that one. I'm sorry.
I agree, could they come?
Yes, they can come pay tomorrow.
Yes, you can.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now let's go to business item number 13, appointment to the planning and zoning board. City clerk?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Commissioners, the office has been notified that Nicholas Ambelis, who was a regular member, has resigned and he is no longer living within the city limits. The current alternate member, Matthew Collins, who was recently appointed, would also like to be considered for this vacancy. The board has two options. The first one is they could either move up the current alternate member, Matthew Collins, as a regular member to fill Mr. Ambelis's unexpired term, which will expire October 1st of 2026. And if that's done, then they would need to appoint an alternate to fill that unexpired term. Or they could do option two, to appoint from the list of applicants. As a regular member, this term would expire October 1st of 2026. And that would leave the current alternate as a...
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion on one of the options. I make a motion to move the current alternate, Matthew Collins, as a regular member to fill the unexpired term of Nicholas Ambelis. This term will expire October 1st, 2026. And to appoint Julie Wade as an alternate member. This term will expire October 1st, 2025.
So moved. I'm sorry, second.
Okay. Is there... Do we have a necessity for any comments on this?
Just a quick one. Does this Julie Wade have any experience, board experience?
She has a bunch. She's ten years retired from the...
That was not to be made serious. That was a little bit of a joke.
So are there any public comments on this item? Okay, we have nothing above. Let's come back to the board unless we have some other comments. Mayor? Yes. It's not an issue she's on the code enforcement board, right? No, she's turned out. She's turned out. Turned out, yeah. She was there ten years. Thank you. That's why that was a joke, what he was saying.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. She's been there ten years.
You didn't get my joke there.
Yeah, I did get it. I just didn't know she was still on. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay, business item number 14, appointment to Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Board. Let me start this one off before I go to the city clerk. Linda Eisner is one of the applicants here. It has been vetted with the city attorney that she is qualified to serve on that board. Just a side note, I would support her being a member of the Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Board. With that said, go ahead with the city clerk.
So the office was notified of the resignation of Mrs. Karen Gallagher. So the board action needed is to appoint one of the applicants listed below to fill the unexpired term of Karen Gallagher, who is a regular member and that term will expire November 22nd of 2025. In addition to the two names listed on the backup, late, very, very late in the day, we did receive another application that I forwarded to y'all by email. And I also have printed the hard copy on your dais. And that was for Mr. Charles Driver. So we have three applicants for this position.
Do I... I'd like to entertain a motion.
I would motion to appoint Charles Driver to point to fill the unexpired term of Karen Gallagher. Term will expire on the 22nd of November, 2025.
Is there a second on that? I'll second it. Okay. Let's have, let's have Commissioner comments. Well, let me go to public comments first. Any public comments on this item? Okay, let's go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Banther?
No, no, no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No comment.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yeah, I just want to withdraw Mr. Driver because he's been in the community for a long time. I was just happy to see his application, nothing towards any other applicant. They do a great job. I just thought it'd be nice to have him on the housing authority, so thank you.
And I apologize for not saying this earlier, that the vice mayor has to recuse himself on this item. Okay, with that said, is there... Let's go to, let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay. Let's go to business item number 15, ratification of Public Works Director. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is after an extensive search, we found a candidate for Public Works Director. Mary Jensen is a civil engineer and has experience at the county level as well as the private sector. And we feel she'll do a great job in our Public Works Department. And we're going to look for your ratification.
Okay, is there any questions of the city manager? Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Is there any public comment? And we'll come back to the board. If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Item 16 has been deferred once again. All right. I had to throw that in. I had to throw that in.
Need to bite the bullet.
Okay, so let's go to business item number 17, discussion and direction of auditor selection procedures for the external auditor. Ron Herring?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. The city is required per Florida statute 218.39 to have an annual financial audit performed by an independent certified public accounting, a CPA firm annually. And 2024 was the last year with Walden Jenkins, who had the previous five-year agreement. Florida statute 218.391 requires the city to use an auditor selection committee when selecting an auditor to conduct the independent financial audit. The auditor selection committee must be at least three members. One member must be a member of the governing board of the city, who will serve as the chair of the committee. So at least three members. We already have two budget advisory committee members have volunteered to serve on the committee. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions of the finance director? Ban... Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Cuyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, quick question. This is a one-meeting or this is a monthly meeting? How many meetings is this?
No, it's basically probably mostly just one meeting. We'll send the RFP out for the firms. They come back in, the committee reviews the audit proposals that come back in. They meet once, review them and score them, and that's it.
So really, it's not a committee, it's more of an interview?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's entertain a motion. Too well, let me, anyway, I guess we can't entertain a motion unless we know the person. I'm willing to be the board's member on this audit committee.
That's good. I think the votes were coming your way anyway.
All right, so now let's have a, let's have... I was gonna do it for you, but, all right, let's have a motion.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Who was the second?
Somebody, a second.
Second, somebody second, okay. Public comments? No, let's come back. Unless there's some more comments, let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes, and thank you for your confidence. Okay, so let's go to ordinances and resolutions. Can you read those, city attorney?
Resolution 202545, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the lease purchase financing of the acquisition of two VACCON trucks, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement, including any schedules attached thereto, with Bank of America, Public Capital Corp., approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of an ESCO agreement in connection therewith, with Argent Institutional Trust Company, a Florida trust company, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is, let's see, are there any questions of staff? I guess of the city attorney or the city manager on this item?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I brought this up. I'm okay with approving the two factors, which I think we only need one, but I'm okay with that. What I do have an issue with is, and I don't know, was this, was that 2013 removed out of this?
Yeah, we would be open to keeping the 2013 if they want to be part of the motion as a backup. I do think it's a little help with the support rather than... I don't think that will change, that won't change the financing and all, right, Ron?
No, it won't change it at all. That's fine.
So what I wanted to say was, you know, we have estimates of $48,000 per year. I don't want to contest that, but I don't think that's going to be the case. And A, if we use it as a backup, it'd probably be nothing. So if one of the new vehicles should go down for whatever reason, and new vehicles do go down, we can have a backup so for either division. So I think what we get for it is not worth what we could utilize it for, so I'd rather keep it.
If there's no other questions, would you mind making that motion?
Was there any other motion made or no?
No, there is no motion.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve both VACCON trucks. Okay, so I make the motion to approve both Vaccon trucks, but also keeping the two thousand and thirteen Vaccon truck, which is a little bit confusing because it also says two thousand and sixteen in there, in the backup. So whichever one, it's the two thousand and thirteen, I believe, is the one we're referring to that I looked at that looked like it was in good condition to keep.
Second.
Is there any public comments? Okay, no public comments, come back to the board unless there's some comments of the members. I'd like to go to roll call, please.
Mr. Salzman, just for clarification, they have an A and B, and they did not mention the resolution?
I'm sorry, Irene, I couldn't hear.
The resolution wasn't voted on, does that have to be separate?
Does it, I, my understanding, the way the motion was to adopt the resolution and the keeping of the truck. Yes.
Do you want me to repeat resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-five? Is that it?
Hey, they got it.
That's okay, I was just wanting clarification.
Just wanted to clarify, that was your motion, the resolution of, with an addition to keep the truck.
With an addition to keep the two thousand and thirteen truck.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay, business, I mean ordinance and resolution number nineteen, would the city attorney read that, please?
Resolution two thousand and twenty-five forty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the live oak at Anclot River Crossing final subdivision plat, application twenty-three dash one-ten, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval theron, and providing for an effective date.
Is there any, before we go, I think you want to ask for any, any conflicts?
I need to recuse myself, and I've already filled out the form, my brokerage is selling those units, so I should vote or comment.
All right, thank you. Are there any question, Renee, do you want to make your presentation?
Sure, this is a resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-seven, this is a final plat for the live oak and, and live oak at Anclot River Crossings. This is a ten-unit subdivision, went through, previously went through site plan approval, infrastructure's been in place, they're bonding a small amount of this, but it is ready to go to plat, and this will allow them to sell these and continue building.
Okay. Is there any commissioner questions of staff?
Yes, I just want to ask, Ms. Vincent, just to clarify, because I, you know, drive past there, you see one building already up. Why is this being presented to us again, the final plat?
Yeah, so you can't officially sell lots and sell the, the units, so a lot of times developers like to, they want to, they want to sell before they actually construct, they want a contract, so you can't do that until it's platted. So without the plat in place, they can't sell, and if they can't sell, they're very reluctant, you don't want to speculatively build these, so.
The one, the one house that was built was already platted?
No, the one that's there, you're allowed to have, oh, what's the term? You're allowed to have models, so a certain number of models in a subdivision, so that's, they were allowed to build that as a model.
Thank you, ma'am. No further questions. Any further questions of staff? Okay, any public comments on this item? No public comments, I'd like to come back and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, it's already been seconded. Is there any commissioner comments? If not, let's go to roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes all the business, let's go to board and staff comments, let's go to the chief, please.
I just want to start off, this Saturday was a tough day for our department, burying our brother, Officer Nicholas Wood, but I want to thank everybody up here on the dais for your support, everybody in the community for their love and support and outreach, and just want Nick and his family to know we'll be here for him, and Christina will always be here for you. Love you.
Thank you. City attorney?
No comment, Mayor.
City manager?
Yes, I do have one, one item. You know, the, we've, as far as the Gross Street stormwater project, we've closed the intersection of Tarpon and Gross for probably the next five weeks or so. So immediately west of that, Unrefined Brewing has approached us about doing a street party. They want to kind of add, since the traffic has been cut off, they want to take advantage of the closed street, attract people to the area on the twenty-sixth. It's very short notice, we can't get it to you until next meeting in two weeks, but they would like some kind of indication that you would be in favor of that, because they have to book bands, buy insurance, get perm, you know, the alcohol permit and so forth. So I just wanted to get a sense from the board if, if you feel you'll be supportive of that application coming to you in two weeks to block off that block of Tarpon Avenue where Unrefined Brewing is, and they'll do a band and food and vendors and so forth on the twenty-sixth of July, it's a Saturday night.
And that's Tarpon Avenue from what, Ring to?
Ring to Gross, to the roadblock. Yeah.
It's already done, isn't it? Looks like it was done.
Oh, it's blocked, it's already blocked.
The road's blocked, they want to take advantage of that and try to draw some more foot traffic.
Did anybody have any opposition to that, so the city manager can move forward?
Okay, we'll bring that to you next time, that's all I have.
Thank you. City clerk?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. So let's go to Commissioner Banther.
Thank you, yes, again, I know we were all at that funeral, and it was very sad, we've had too many of those here. I was, I was talking to the, to the chief earlier, and I think that once he gets the police boat in service, if his people, and he approves of it, I think we should dedicate that boat to Nicholas Wood. I know he, I was told he was a voter, always try and find ways to remember the past, and I think that's a very cheap and easy way to do that, and it was something he loved, and it's, and it's our first official police, police vessel, I think we should consider that if the, if the chief and the, and his, and his people want that, that's all.
That's a great idea. Commissioner DiDonato?
I would, I would echo that, and, and, while it was sad, I was very proud of the reception and the turnout, and even along the route back into town, I appreciate his people, so honored that young man.
Commissioner Cuyas?
I just, respect and indulgence to the police department and the whole Wood family, it was just a, just a somber day. We did have a great Fourth of July picnic. The rain did, you know, put out some of our fireworks a little bit, but it's all right, we kept rocking, and that's what it's about. I'm sure those people fighting for our revolution independence had to go through a lot of rain and mud to, to fight, so that was great, I just, other than that, it's, you know, we got a lot done today, we got a lot focused on. I am worried about some other people coming in front of us, asking for requests to, for any relief on similar situations as to that one orange street property, because there have been other ones, and we'll just have to go from there. So other than that, it's a great meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also, has everybody else been at that Nick's funeral, and it was really a heartfelt tribute to him and the family, family's great, our police force, there's nothing better. A lot of tears were shed, and truthfully, I was so moved by all the people riding back, all the residents that came out, whoever thought to make that announcement, they were all there, they were all holding their hearts, they were all saluting. It was, it's what makes Tarpon Tarpon. I loved every minute of it, I had tears watching all these people, it was a very, very rough day. Coming back and celebrating his life in the rec center was the start of healing, and you know, there's going to be some tough times ahead, but we're there to, you know, support our brothers in the police force, the fire department was there, it was just a very moving moment. I do want to say the July fourth fireworks was done properly, there was a system north of us, there was a system south of us, we had a nice window, and all of the feedback that came back, at least to me, was that it was one of the best fireworks in forty to fifty years. I don't know whether that had to do with the lightning coming down, or the darkness, or, I don't care what it was, you know, it's okay to book a firework presentation, it's very hard to book a storm and a thunderstorm to come in to coincide, you know, I'll only take a little credit for the dunk. It was, it was really nice. We really did a great job. Also, the Fourth of July party was amazing, it was extremely hot, it was really nice, this, this city just always steps up to the plate with, you know, free food and, you know, water slides, and, you know, to see the kids and, and, and just the people, you know, there, it was just, it was just great. So the other thing, and last but not least, that I'd like to say to everybody if they're listening, there's going to be things posted on Facebook, and just to let you know, Facebook isn't real, just because people post it doesn't mean that it's true. So you have to be careful, you know, taking the bait, there's a lot of bait out there, and there's a lot of hooks with delicious bait on it, so I just want you to understand, if, if anybody has issues, we have helplines we can call, you know, the city manager, I'm sure he's loving the calls, and, or call the mayor, you know, me don't call, I'm not interested. But no, just the bottom line is, because there's so much misinformation out there, and, and it gets carried away, so just want to thank this board, we, I think this went about as smooth as it possibly can, and tomorrow I'm going to Forward Pinellas, I will be carrying those requests there, whether they like it or not, and that's just the way it is, so thank you, and we're finishing.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I'm not sure if anybody else did, big props to the fire department, I know we, I'd asked them questions, why can't the police department and fire department share a boat? And that weekend right after, right, they went out and saved a whole bunch of people on the Anclot Islands, so we talk about money and saving, and, and that was pretty much egg on my face, so they saved a lot of people's lives out there, and of course it's worth it, so I just wanted to give them a big shout out and recognition for it. Thank you.
Commissioner, there's no egg, you know, it's, it's our job to, it's our job to ask tough questions, it's our job to push back, you know, even if we're, there's no egg in doing that, you did your job.
Mayor, I have one more thing I wanted to say. I don't know if the board knew about this, I don't know if the fire chief, did you speak to them about the bid that we got for the covering? Okay, so I'll make that, we did get back a bid to cover the, the boat, the fire boat, and it was beyond astronomical, it was about twenty thousand dollars for the permit, and et cetera, et cetera, it came to over sixty thousand dollars just to put a covering. That's just crazy numbers, I mean, you know, so I don't think that's going to go ahead, but at least we did follow through and try to see, you know, thank you for following it through, chief. It was a little too costly, and you know, you need to have something that is readily available, like you just said, for quick rescue, you can't just cover the thing up and, you know, have people stand there fifteen minutes and take the covers off, so, sad.
Thank you. Okay, so just to piggyback off, you know, I, you know, this, I'm really happy with this board, I, I think that we are doing, you know, what I had hoped we would do, which was finding ways to compromise and finding solutions. Thank you, Commissioner Banther, for pulling that motion, I know, you know, you pulled back, we came up with a, a solution. We're not always perfect, and it doesn't mean that, you know, there is no always an ultimate right or wrong, we have to make decisions, and I think we are making as thoughtful decisions as we possibly can. So I really appreciate everybody participating in, in, you know, whatever compromise, I'm not asking me to ever compromise the principles, but, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do like tonight, and I thought tonight was a perfect example of a board that functions well together. Yeah, I want to, you know, thank the, the fireworks were amazing, special thanks to the chief, fire chief, for, you know, your guys having, you know, making sure that that was, everything was done safely, we got the fireworks off, there was a whole bunch of people out on Howard Park, you know, expecting fireworks, they got it, everybody was safe, you guys did an amazing job, all your guys, thank your, your, all your firefighters for being out there doing their, doing their thing, and, and you're a great leader, so really appreciate it, we're lucky to have you.
And the police.
And the police.
And the police.
All my people. You guys get a lot of thanks for a lot of things, he never, you get a way more thanks than he does, so let him have one.
I do a way a lot more.
Let him have one, okay, even though you look alike. So the, okay, you know, Officer Wood, Commissioner Banther, that's a great idea, I was hoping we would come up with some way to, to, you know, we made a promise to remember him here at the city, that would be a great idea, so I, I hope you get it, you know, get that put on the agenda so we can vote on that, that was, that's a really good idea. And that was, you know, it was a beautiful service for a very sad day, so I apologize to the residents, if anybody can listen to us right now, I did get a text that there was no sound going through on the, on the YouTube livestream, so hopefully they'll get it straightened out, I'm sure they've got us recorded and when they can, you know, put it back so people can hear us, and we want the residents to be able to listen to us as well. You know, on, I had a, a nice meeting with the principal, Principal Fatilitis, and she came to the office, and we're going, she's going to be coming up, and we're going to be proposing a citizens academy for the high school, of which I would appreciate, you know, and I think it's going to include all the commissioners, maybe, you know, what we kind of envision is a, a day on campus here, each commissioner has a separate room, we, you know, go over whatever items, you know, you guys feel comfortable wanting, you know, that you're passionate about, we talk to them, we actually get them to come up here, we give them, you know, some sample agendas, they get to vote on things, they get to see how, how, you know, democracy works, and I think it will be really, really a cool thing, so she's going to be getting with her government teachers, and they're going to put together something, and then they're going to come here, and she's going to make a, a presentation to propose something for us, so I think that would be really cool. You know, when I, when I took that, had that picture up on the screen of when I was really young with a lot of hair, I had as much hair as you did back then, so, you know, and, you know, that, across the street, obviously there was nothing there, it was all fields and stuff, and I, and this is no besmirchment on any prior boards, so, Mayor, it's not going to anything, things happen, but the idea of having the front door of our city hall facing a sewer plant isn't the most attractive thing, right? I don't think anything, you know, that plant is getting old, we know it had a long-term bond, I think it's getting near forty years old, I don't know what the useful life of those things are, I'm looking at you two guys, because, you know, you guys have a lot more tread on your tires, that someday, someday you, and the two of you, have a lot more tread on your tires, that, I mean, it's not something that, you know, we could either do or afford at, at this stage, but at some point, you know, getting that moved out of there somehow, having, could you imagine if we had, because, and again, nobody knew at the time that Live Oak was going to become the, the thoroughfare going down to the docks, but wouldn't it be awesome if, if you came down Live Oak and there was a tree-lined street running right into city hall, you know, with a park, and it would just be, it would just be amazing, and it takes a lot of, you know, at some point, that's going to be the, you know, as much of an important road going into, into Tarpon as Tarpon Avenue is. And somewhere down the road, maybe we can design that, maybe the next couple of years before we, this board takes off, but that would be a long-term project that at some point, that, that would be amazing, if that was done, you know, in my lifetime to see that happen, it would be amazing, I think it would really do something special for the town, and so I'm throwing that on the two of you to get it done. All right, well, to get it done, again, it's, it's something, so anyways, with that said, I adjourn the meeting at nine sixteen. said, adjourn the meeting at nine sixteen.